Thank you.
Good evening. I now call the Board of Education special meeting to order at 5:30 PM.
I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to allow for public comment this evening.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. So we will add that to our amended agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda for Monday, August 12, 2024, Board of Education's special meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action?
I move to approve the amended agenda for Monday, August 12, 2024, Board of Education's special meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borchiding.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. So we'll start the meeting with our public comment. Ryan, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have four.
Okay, so with four speakers, we'll allow each speaker five minutes. Due to the amended agenda, I don't have the, all the policies and rules and regulations, but please know that we would ask you to please respect the people in the room, no profanity. We're allowing you five minutes. If you have any personnel matters that you would like to discuss, there is a separate way to do that, and that would not, this would not be the appropriate format. And just please be respectful and professional. So Ryan, would you call our first speaker, please?
Emily Barnes, and she is speaking on the new building at Van Buren.
Hello, my name is Emily Barnes. I live at 1721 Wolf Drive Northwest. I come for you this evening in several capacities. First, I am the music specialist at Van Buren, where I have taught for 20 years. I'm also the mother of three children who attend Maple Grove Elementary. But my primary purpose, purpose in addressing you is that I stand in representation, representation of all of the families at Van Buren who maybe don't have the English skills to come and advocate for their children. We serve families from all over. In particular, our ELL families, they come from war-torn countries, they come from poverty-stricken countries, and we have a disproportionately large population of families who just live in old-fashioned, you know, generational American poverty. And so a lot of times, these families, they live in cramped conditions. Our attendance area primarily serves one- and two-bedroom apartments, single-wide trailers. And I like to think that all of these families send their kids to public schools so that they can, you know, learn and rise up out of those conditions. And what do they encounter when they come to Van Buren? More cramped conditions. We are on top of each other. We are using every available inch of space. The solution this year was to take one of our largest classrooms and divide it into six smaller spaces. And so now we have six ELL teachers, same families that I just mentioned. Generally, an ELL group is maybe six to 10 students. So split the difference and say eight, if we do the math, that's 48 students in one classroom with six teachers and walls and all their gear, and that's just one classroom that I'm talking about. And kids go in and out of that room all day, every day. Let's juxtapose, juxtapose that with my children who attend Maple Grove Elementary. Two of my children have special needs, and they receive their pull-out services in these big, beautiful spaces. My kids have been raised in, you know, an average, middle-class, white family with all the privilege that that entails. And when they go to school, they have tons of space to do everything that they want, in addition to the huge backyard that they have to play in and the gigantic library that we have at home of children's literature. So there's a clear equity issue here that we really feel needs to be addressed by the board and by the district. If we want to close the achievement gap, we have to give the same opportunities to all students district-wide. Not only that, but Van Buren sits just two blocks away from the border with college community. And as I understand it, right now our district is hemorrhaging students to college community, to Lynnmar, to Marion. You know, families are leaving our district, but if you see a gigantic, beautiful school being built a five-minute walk away from your home, as opposed to a many minutes on the bus or in the car to get to college community, to me, that's a no-brainer. I'm going to send that kid, I'm going to open and roll to the Cedar Rapids District instead of out. So that's, you know, just another reason to build on the current site where it is. And I do have one more reason that I want to share with you, and this one's maybe a little bit on the selfish side, but no less valid for all that, and that's your Van Buren staff. We are one of the strongest, most cohesive groups of intelligent, hard-working teachers that you could ever hope to encounter. People often remark on our staff just how well we work together and how much they want to stay with us. We have people in our building who have been with us five, 10, 15, 20 years and longer. We have served the district faithfully. Student learning conditions are our working conditions. And honestly, I feel like we deserve to be on a level playing field with our colleagues across the district who maybe have not quite as difficult a teaching assignment. Van Buren's not an easy place to teach, but it is a good place to be for students and for teachers. So for all of these reasons and many more, because I will run out of time, I urge you, do the right thing, please, here, and vote to build a new building on the current Van Buren site. You will not regret it. Thank you.
Kenya Kenny. She will be speaking about new building on the Van Buren site.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate the job that you school board members do. It's a very thankless job. This is my eighth year of teaching at Van Buren, my 10th year in the district, and my 26th year of teaching. I've always taught in small rural communities before this, typically all white population, you know, cohesive families, that type of thing. This is unlike anything I've ever experienced in my life, and it's the most beautiful place to be. We have, like she said, families from all over the world, and our students, our ELL students especially, are just amazing individuals. And what they teach our students that grew up in the United States and what our kids are teaching them, it's just, it's a beautiful thing to watch. She already mentioned the ELL room, I won't go into that. I teach title this year in title. There will be three of us title teachers in the same room, as well as our IDs, as well as packed, all in one classroom. So at any point, there could be 40 upwards, 40, 50 kids in that room trying to learn. And as with the ELL program, it will be very noisy and crowded. Our special ed room is being divided into four sections and is a very small classroom, and that's including behaviors. We need, we need so much. We need more staff, and we need more space. We need an autism program, we need a behavior program, we need spaces for kids to de-escalate, we need spaces for kids to celebrate, and not those spaces, have them not be together. We need spaces for those kids to learn. And instead, we're putting all of those kids into one space, and that's going to be very difficult. One thing that she didn't mention was our building is not handicap accessible. My first year at Van Buren, school hadn't even started yet, we were in our PD days, and I happened to be walking by the front door, and a father rolled up in a wheelchair, and I went to open the door to help him in, and I stood there, and I paused, and I said, I don't know what to do. Let me go find somebody that can help, because I couldn't bring him in the building. So I went and found my principal at the time and was absolutely horrified to find out that we had to wheel him all the way around the building, up a ramp to a third-grade classroom to get into our building. Since that time, we've had students that have had broken legs, or staff members too, that have had to be in wheelchairs or whatever. We've had, in the snow and the rain, had to take them all the way around the building. We've had teachers picking up students because they can't get up and down the stairs. When we move classrooms, which as a title teacher, I get moved often, and if we go downstairs or upstairs, we have to carry all our cabinets and everything heavy all the way around the building to bring it upstairs, because there's no other way to get it up there. And I was not meant for manual labor, it's very difficult for me. So, just so I know. Some of our bathrooms are in horrible shape. The girls' bathroom upstairs has at least a half inch of water at all times. I keep waiting for somebody to sit on a toilet and fall through the floor. And this last year, they pulled out all the toilets and reached the floor, but the leaking problem is still there. So it's not structurally sound. And there is so much mold in our building. I have, my first year there, I had six sinus infections. I went to my doctor, and he, at one point, was so concerned, I had a CT scan to see if there was something going on in my sinuses. He sent me to an allergist, he sent me to an ENT. Come to find out, I'm allergic to a few types of grasses, mold and cockroaches. Mold and cockroaches are all over our building. So I, I do all the things. I, I have the tea tree oil in my classroom, you know, and I still, I get sick all the time. And that's something that our kids and other staff members battle with as well. Last year was a very unique year, and many of us wanted to quit. We lost a lot of staff members last year that, some I was shocked left, but we were all at a breaking point. And at one point at the end of last year, the district said, we're going to give you two portables, we're going to give more staff, and this ray of hope came in and just lifted everybody's spirits. And then they said they were taking it away, and now I'm getting emotional, but I just sat at my desk and cried, because we need space. So I'm sorry, I don't know where that came from. Our behavior team works harder than any behavior team I've ever seen. They have such close relationships with our families and our students, and they need space to work with those kids rather than being on top of each other. Our, our families deserve the very best we can give. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Wolf, and she'll be speaking on Van Buren.
All right, after watching my colleague cry, no, I'm crying, but anyway, sorry, that's just an effect of being a close staff. My name is Kristen Wolf, and I've worked at Van Buren for 19 years. I've done various jobs. I'm a jack-of-all-trades. They covered a lot of the things I was going to talk to, so I'm going to make it short and sweet, like Justin told me. And main thing is, our, our building, since the day I walked into my building, 19 years ago, people have been saying, it needs to be torn down. The heating and cooling is terrible. It causes the mold, like Kenya talked about. And I knew the heating and cooling person by name, because he was at our school so often. And I remember, maybe my first year, second year of teaching, I asked him, I said, how can we fix this system at, at Van Buren? And he said, tear the building down. And I started laughing, because he was a jokester and whatnot, and he would joke around a lot, but he was dead serious. He was like, the way that this heating and cooling system was made, it was made for a building in California, not for Iowa. It was made, and it just, it doesn't work. We have so many mold issues. And this in turn, like Kenya said, it causes so much respiratory illness at our staff. And I've talked to so many former Van Buren teachers, and they always say, the sickest that I've ever been was when I worked at Van Buren. And a lot of people said, I would have stayed if I wasn't getting two, three sinus infections a year, that kind of thing. We deal with a lot. We deal with critters, I mean, mice, cockroaches, raccoons, termites, birds, bats, most recently a cat. And no one forgets the skunk. That was a terrible time when the skunk got in the building. We've been put on lockdown so many times just because of animals that get into our building, because we try to keep the kids safe. The walls, one time a child fell through the wall and into another classroom. The walls are not solid. When we got Promethean boards, what, 10, whatever, years ago, once a, a teacher couldn't get her board, because there were no sound walls in her room to be able to build the wall, the Promethean board onto, we had the split entry, like Kenya talked about on Open House night. That same gentleman came in, I showed him how to get into the building, and he said, I was thinking of coming to lunch every week with my daughter. I can't. There's no way that I could get in here, eat with her, and be able to, you know, do that in a timely manner. The bathrooms, we have doors going outside from our bathrooms. Every year, it is our constant worry that some kid is going to go into the bathroom and just run right out the door. We have students who are kindergartners, kindergartners are five, you know. We have students who have limited English. They don't understand, I'm going for a bathroom break, not to the recess right now. And, you know, Jackson Head there's beautifully modified, and then they tore down Jackson. So this beautiful bathroom that we were so envious of, torn down within five to 10 years after being built. And so they've tried so hard to get rid of the stench in the bathrooms, I mean, and to repair them, but it, they still fail in comparison to the other bathrooms that I've seen renovated in our district. And then on top of that, we have so many more kids than we're supposed to. I was originally told way back when, when I started, that Van Buren was built for about 300 students. And we have well over that, I mean, 450, I don't know exact numbers. We don't fit. And so when you already have these various safety issues, and then you have to have so many more kids than you're used to, it, we are so stressed out. And it's just not, it's not safe with all of the existing hazards at Van Buren. Many, many schools were very worried, what, seven, eight, nine years ago, when they started announcing about this initiative to tear down buildings and rebuild. We were probably one of the few buildings where like, yes, they're finally going to tear down our building and build new. We have so much space. We could probably still have recess while they're rebuilding, because we have so much land at Van Buren to rebuild and to still have recess during construction, which I know other schools had to have indoor recess. You know, we are a school who wants to be torn down and rebuilt, so please give us that environment so our students can thrive. Thanks.
Thank you. Kelly McMahon, and she'll be talking on action items regarding Hoover and Van Buren.
Good evening, Kelly McMahon, 550-8-Dassel Drive, Southwest Cedar Rapids. I am here in a very joyous mood of this spectacular occasion that I've been waiting for many, many years. Back in 2018, when the facilities plan was moving forward, we're like, yay, Hoover's going to get a new building, but not until the very last stage. And after we came back from achieving the Community School Institute in Milwaukee, we were in this high, and then we see this huge apartment complex being built, and we're like, where are we going to put all these children? Because we had two apartment complexes being built in our neighborhood, in our district. Fortunately, West Willow was already in the process of being built, so that way they were able to absorb some of those children into their population, because we didn't have the capacity. And we also knew that with the community school model, our families were going to be stabilized. They weren't going to be as transient, which means our families and our students were going to be staying to stay at Hoover. And we needed to have the space for that growth that was going to be happening in our neighborhood. And since the Duray Show, we know that there's, the Old Mack is supposed to become a apartment complex as well. Once they get the permits, it's going to be going, that's going to be like a 58-unit apartment complex. Yes, I filed the city council. So in 2019, I came to this board meeting and said, hey, no, please don't slow down. We need you to keep going, because who, and in fact, we also need you to think about what you're going to do with Hoover and move us up, because we need space now. Like, we know what's happening. This was before the decision was to move the avenue over to West Willow. In addition to other apartments, I believe it's Arrow Ridge that was also shifted over there, which they weren't originally supposed to, but they needed to do that in order to make space for Hoover, so that way we were not over capacity. And at this time, we already had four title teachers teaching in one classroom, and we had four or five ELL teachers teaching out of one classroom, which this past year, it was up to six ELL teachers in one classroom. So thankfully, we moved forward. And then we all felt the stress of Van Buren at Hoover when they were building the union. We knew what was happening. I intentionally served on the last committee for the facilities plan, because I knew that Van Buren had to be addressed. And when you address Van Buren, you also are going to have to address Hoover, because those lines are connected. And our families deserve the best for their children. Our students are amazing, the communities that we serve are incredible, and they all deserve the very, very best. And so I tried my very best, as you know, I'm a very persistent, obnoxious person, and I tried to persuade everyone to say, we need to deal with Van Buren. Unfortunately, my voice of one was not persuasive enough. And so they moved forward with making the recommendation of Arthur and Garfield being merged, and then going to Harrison and Madison. And as we sat there and watched down the street, we knew what was going to happen to Van Buren. At the same time, this past school year, we could have used a fourth section of kindergarten. Having 27, 28 kindergartners in one classroom is not ideal. I'm thankful that my classroom is one of the largest classrooms in the district when it comes to kindergarten spaces, because if I had been in any other building, classroom in our building, we would have been on top of each other. But fortunately, I have a very beautiful, large kindergarten classroom, which I'm so thankful for. So I can't tell you how thankful I am that this board is going to move forward with our recommendation to build a new Hoover and Van Buren without going through the process of another task force looking at the facilities plan, because we cannot, we cannot wait for that work to be completed. We have to do what's best for our students, we have to do what's best for our families, and they deserve the very best facilities. And Van Buren and Hoover do not have space. They do not have space for what the growth is already, and we do not have space for the growth that the city is planning on putting in the southwest side, trying to stabilize the city population. So thank you so very much for bringing this to the board, for the work that's being done, and giving our students what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items the director would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borchiding.
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Aye. Moving on to administration. Our first item within administration is the approval of a resolution to construct two elementary school buildings on the Hoover Elementary School and Van Buren Elementary School sites. Before we take comments or have questions, I do want to note that Chad Schumacher, our Director of Operations, who presented on this topic at our last meeting, couldn't be here tonight, because he is at the Oak Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, Oak Hill-Jackson. He's there discussing the upcoming Pebble Vote and also the future-ready facilities plan with that neighborhood association. Our administrative team has been out in the community consistently, talking to people in the community about Pebble and about our facilities plan moving into the future. So we just want to assure you that we are doing the work and reaching out to the community, getting input from the community on both of the initiatives that are coming before us. So back to my, to the original question here, anyone on the board have questions or comments before we take a vote on this?
I just want to make note, because it was brought up, that it's important to state the enrollment numbers. So, you know, we have here that the enrollment was, anticipated enrollment is 466 at Van Buren, with a suggested enrollment capacity of 370 students. And Hoover is at a projected enrollment of 416, expected and suggested enrollment capacity is 320. So in both circumstances, we're 100 students over. And so I just thank you all for coming in here to share, and thank you for all that you do. You know, we know these growing class sizes impact student outcomes and the well-being of our teachers, and we are here to ensure equitable educational opportunities for all. So thank you for, for sharing, and I'm excited about the step forward.
I think just to, on that as well, I think in our Facilities and Finance Committee, what we've also been hearing is, what you just stated, I think, are the enrollment numbers on day one. And what we, what I think we've seen in both of these schools is those enrollment numbers simply go up throughout the school year, so they're already too high for the capacity, and they're not going to get any smaller than they are on day one.
I want to say thank you so much for sticking it out with us. Thank you, okay? Your sacrifices are so important, and thank you so much, and definitely looking forward to what the future will hold concerning this. You guys rock. Thank you.
Well, I can appreciate when we approved the facilities master plan in 2018, that we put a pause in, so we could step back, review, to see what shifts we needed to make. And then, from the presentation at our last board meeting, and the growth that is happening in Hoover and Van Buren, it is time. So thank you all for coming to speak before the board.
Other comments? Dr. Grover?
Thank you, President Garlock. First of all, I just want to say thank you to our staff members. Definitely, their voices were heard here tonight, but they've been in a number of different meetings with us throughout the school year. It's been a very thoughtful process with the team, and also to their leadership, really helping us to understand the context. We know the numbers, but really their daily experiences that they have each and every day. In order for us to take care of our students, we have to make sure that we have an environment that where we're also taking care of our staff. So everyone is important. And we also want to make sure that our families, that they continue to choose Cedar Rapids Community School District. That's important, and we want them to know that we have a space for them. You know, I'm also reminded, about a year ago, you know, we had a conversation even with the city officials, and it's been, I really appreciate the board encouraging the collaboration of us having the discussions, because they have continued. And if you recall, we had a report from RSP and our district demographer. We've been able to confirm his numbers with the city officials, and so the growth in the city definitely is having a positive impact on us. And so I think as we consider the proposal that's in front of us tonight, that definitely, it is an opportunity for us to embrace the growth, continue to ask our staff members to be patient with us, also appreciate the pause. And as far as the rest of our elementary schools, we'll continue to evaluate those as well. Our future-ready facilities plan is still underway, but right now, we are already at capacity, and we're not even at first day of school over at Van Buren and Hoover. And so, again, I think we have confidence in the information that we have in terms of the predictability, the analytics that we've received, but moreover, we have the daily testimonies that our folks are experiencing every day. So thank you in advance for your consideration.
Just one thought to add, as, just as a community member, I think it's always exciting to see growth in the community, and to see the way that that southwest side of Cedar Rapids has grown over the last few years, and really continues to grow with additional apartments, additional housing. We'll have the addition of the new lead library and all of that green space. There are so many things happening in that neighborhood that make it attractive to people coming to our community. And as a school board, we want people coming into our community to have the very best educational opportunities. So I echo everything that's already been said here. I think it's an exciting time for the school district. It's also a very exciting time for the community of Cedar Rapids. Welcome is our language, and I think we are living proof of that, as we welcome new people to our community. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution to construct two new elementary school buildings on the Hoover Elementary School and Van Buren Elementary School sites?
I move to approve the resolution to construct two new elementary school buildings on the Hoover Elementary School and Van Buren Elementary School sites.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait, wait, this is a roll call vote. Wait, wait, this is a roll call vote.
Look at that support.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Yeah, aye, aye.
Director Borshidin.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Aye. The second item to approve is the equipment maintenance and breakout insurance settlement agreement. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borshidin.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Under board governance, we have the first read to revision of the Cedar Rapids Community School District policy 0602, 0602 PR1, and 0602-PR2 reading, which must be adopted to comply with specific changes passed by the Iowa Legislature in Senate File 2435 during the 2024 legislative session. Do we have a motion to approve the first read of policy 0602 and procedure 0602-PR1 and 0602-PR2?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borshidin.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting with no further business?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Will you stand adjourned at 6:00 PM?